Meeting in order, first thing on the approval of the agenda, we do have an addition.
Move to approve this addition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was citizens to be heard, is anybody here, I guess they're all here for, anybody here to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Okay. Approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Proof that we have minutes from November twenty-second and December the eighth.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
That will move into Georgia Bordeaux to replace a full-time custodial position, Georgia.
Good morning.
Morning, Georgia.
I'm just requesting authorization to replace a full-time custodial position, the position was vacated last summer by a full-time employee and at that timeframe we decided to try and fill the position with a variable hour position or several variable hour positions which is thirteen hours or less. The variable hour positions, they work really well, but I think we're to the point, we've reached a point where we have too many and we need to have a little bit more consistency, so we're looking to finally replace that position with a full-time employee. The expense for the position would be covered in the existing budget from the building maintenance department.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
All, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Amendment to the Moorehead law enforcement agreement, Mr. Berg.
Mr. Berg, you're feeling generous today, huh?
It's low for Christmas. I heard him doing something else before.
Yeah, I know, yeah, he probably did. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. On the board meeting on November fifteenth, you approved a lease agreement with the city of Moorehead for the proposed law enforcement center. In that lease, on the first page, near the bottom, there was a statement in there that the operating space occupied solely by the Moorehead Police Department shall be no less than sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. And after a little more discussion and review of Moorehead, they would have liked that to read the fact that it would be the ninety-five hundred square feet for the office space and seven thousand nine hundred square feet for parking, to break that out. It's just a little more than the sixteen-five, about a thousand square feet more and in reviewing it with Jenny Mirage over here too, in fact reviewing it, she was the main author of this document, we see no, nothing, no problem with making that change. So would ask for your confirmation of that change, so then you'd be signing the new lease with both cities, because the city has signed this already, so if they've signed this, you want to be approved of it, then we can move on down with the lease.
Kevin, you got a question?
Ryan, does that change the forecasted revenue?
No, Mr. Chair, it doesn't change anything, because this is just a minimum that they would occupy, they may occupy more than this and of course even the lease provides for an adjustment from year to year, but it's almost a, it's almost a safety net for us, because they're guaranteed to occupy at least that much space, so we feel it's a good thing for us as well.
We do have a different square footage rate for the parking versus office space?
Yes, we do, yes, we do. And I, well, that's probably one of the reasons why they wanted that separate and to be assured that they would have at least that much square foot for the parking as well.
But the four hundred and fifty thousand or whatever that we get to four years down the road or something is still there, five hundred thousand?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. In fact, I think the exact figure is four hundred and forty-eight thousand something, so, and frankly, that kind of starts out from day one, but then they're giving credit for their investment on it, so, yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we can't do that public hearing yet, take it. Presentation's probably gonna take too long. Is that agenda additional, is that all? Can't move anything up? I'm not allowed to, can I let it be done or do we go through committee reports? Let's get the committee reports out of the way. Jenny, you want to start us off today?
Yeah, give me a moment. Uh, let's see, last week I attended the extension meeting, just a good overview of all of the different activities that they've been doing there, one really great program that they've added is the after-school program at Horizon, they've got a different pool of kids than normally would be involved with four-H programs. They are working collaboratively with the cultural resources group and it's been quite successful, they even bus kids after the program home, which has helped with their numbers. And they've also had a really successful group at DGF, correct?
Yeah, right.
I think they could add more if they had more volunteers, but it's definitely something that I think Frank and I had requested that maybe come before the board, because I think there's a line item in our budget from the cultural resources group and I think we've kind of questioned what they do with that money from time to time and it's clearly being put to very good use out there. And yesterday I attended the Lakeland Mental Health meeting in Fergus Falls, good year-end reports, many of their programs have seen really good margins, Moorehead specifically, with exception to the psychiatry program that's facing some long wait times in scheduling appointments, is facing a seven percent margin of growth, so it's definitely being utilized well, there was some discussion on possible property acquisition for additional parking and, and we also had a closed session in regards to appointing a new interim CEO, there was a job that was offered to someone, so let's see, hopefully they accept it, but that concludes my report.
Grant, you ready for yours?
Well, let's see here, I think so.
You did so many this week.
Yeah, I did have some. Let's see, well, we had a diversion authority board meeting and, you know, went over the usual things at the board meeting and then thanked Nancy Otto for all her service, because she'll be done and she's been with it since, since the beginning and I think it was the board chair, Mr. Vanyel, he's done two as the board chair and the mayor of Fargo is taking over that spot. And let's see, Kevin and I, we're both at the EDC meeting at the Holiday Inn in Fargo last week, we had presentations by the community colleges and NDSU on what they've got going on and then kind of a year-end report by the, by the executive director. And, let's see, Friday night I went to the holiday party for the veteran service volunteers and that was a nice event and well-attended and I thank them all on behalf of the county commission for all that they do during the year and I think that was it for me.
Wayne?
Thursday, December fifteenth, Lake Agassay Regional Library Executive Committee meeting, general business, financial report, always on track, director's report and the president's report, meeting was quite brief. Friday, December sixteenth, for the Clay County Collaborative Early Childhood Initiative, general business, a presentation by Kelly Gast of Solutions Behavioral Health, Early Childhood Mental Health Services, and the mental health situations of children is increasing at an alarming rate due to many factors and the reasons why those factors at this time, and the presentation was quite an eye-opener. We discussed the two thousand seventeen work plan and then there were agency updates and that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Kevin? Okay, on Wednesday of last week, I had the diversion, public outreach and land management meetings and in the public outreach meetings, we went over several documents, one was a paper that was prepared by the board chair on two thousand sixteen accomplishments. We went through the two thousand seventeen budget overview, there was a funding and financing, there was a, more information on diversion, on the diversion inlet structure, which the Corps has awarded that contract, they've awarded that contract, it's for fifty-seven million dollars, I believe, fifty-six million dollars and that went to a firm out of Minneapolis, so I, I think they're looking at that getting started in the spring. And then the land management meeting. We pretty much talked about, right now, there's, there's needs to do additional studies for easements and stuff on, on phase one, they're, they're looking, part of the two thousand seventeen goals are to start the land acquisition for phase one of the project, so that's in the works. Then the diversion authority meeting, which Grant commented on, we did, one of the major things that we did do is we approved the release of the RFP for the P-three contract request for proposals. And then itself, I know Brian maybe can, if he wants to get more in-depth with that, because you've worked with that considerably and we thank you for that work you've done. And then, also then, we had several change orders to current portions of the project, we did review again the two thousand seventeen budget and where the income sources would be for that. And that kind of covers that, we did, then I had, also on Thursday, I had the EDC meeting that Grant talked about. And yesterday morning, we met with juvenile detention, Steven, juvenile detention regarding, you know, just more discussion on future planning for the overcrowding of that facility and how our membership will look, so.
Wednesday, I was with the University of Minnesota Extension too, with the four-H and they gave a good presentation of what four-H is doing, you know, I mean, sometimes you're probably thinking that four-H isn't a survivor and I mean, they have too many kids in deal with, you know, they, I mean, they could have more groups, but they need more volunteers there, so if anybody's out there that wants to volunteer in four-H, they need some help there. Also, with another program that the University of Minnesota, they put a program on Friday morning on nitrogen, they put it on the Emco Center, had a program for farmers on nitrogen. And it was a very, I went to attend at that, it was a three-hour session and it was a very good session on nitrogen and I think it's, you know, you could see it was mostly young farmers that are in there, you know, and it's just, I'm sure some of the older ones got their practices down, I don't know, probably they don't need any help on that or not, but I don't know, I guess I'm going to get a certificate for attending that, you know, but I wouldn't advise any farmer to hire me as a nitrogen applicator, but, but it was a very good session that the University of Minnesota put on.
What about your frame?
Thursday, we had the MetroCock, there again, we had some fund carryovers that, and now they got projects for all those funds, there was around three hundred thousand dollars in funds there that they needed some projects for and they got them all taken care of, so we're also looking for a different payable vendor and they're doing the aerial photography, which they do every so many years, they're going to redo that again, so that process is also ongoing. Yesterday, I had a Rhonda, had a good session with the, with the legislators, Representative Mark Wittenlean was there and Senator Eakin, she talked about the problems we're having at social services as far as the state not paying for people, people are committed to, I don't know, sentences or they're sentenced to, be committed to hospitals, you know, and, and then the state takes care of that, you know, but when state says they're recovered, but there's no place to put them, all of a sudden, we get charged for that. And they went from fifty percent, it used to be we split the difference, but now this year it's a hundred percent and we're getting charged thirteen hundred dollars a day for some of them and then.
Is that the sex offender? Oh, no, that's not.
Mentally ill.
Mentally ill. And they take them to the other one, CBHH, whatever, you know where that's at?
Yep, Community Behavioral Health Hospital.
If they put them into that thing, which is the next step down, that's eighteen hundred dollars a day, so we're trying to get that, that law or changed again back to, back to what it was. It'd be nice if the state took care of the whole thing, you know, but it was fifty-fifty and trying to get that lease back to that. Okay, that was my meeting, so I think we are now at eight forty-five and we can move on to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, well, that's coming up, I did want to, like, now it's true that I, I did go on Thursday night to that meet and greet that the city of Moorehead put on for their city manager candidate, so.
Okay, do we need to motion open this public hearing, anything, huh?
Move to open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good morning, this is actually just a requirement as part of your two-year abatement program, where we list all the parcels that are eligible for the abatement as well as the estimated amount for payable two thousand seventeen. And it gives anybody the opportunity to discuss the abatement program. I think in front of you, you have a list, both.
These are all parcels that houses were put on this year.
Correct, it's actually two years ago, probably, is when it started and there's some staggering depending on the abatement requirements, it differs by city.
First year, summer second year.
Right, yep.
I just noticed last year, as I was going over some of the minutes from last year, and last year was three hundred eighty-nine thousand, this year we're at four hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Right, and it'll probably stay at about this amount, because now we've kind of saturated the number of properties that will be eligible and it will just continue on as long as we continue the program, at a most probably this amount.
What is the percentage of usage among these parcels that are getting it?
Oh, they automatically get it.
Oh, they, I thought they had to apply for it.
That, and before they did, but, maybe in the city of Moorehead, but in the other cities, they just automatically qualify.
All right, thank you.
Now, this is, I think, is something that we don't levy for or anything, right?
We haven't in the past, we haven't in the past.
Oh, yeah, just what comes in.
Right.
Okay, very good. All right. Put it, put it still calculated in there.
Well, it's, it's calculated in the budget, but we deficit fund that, so we actually do not levy for this abatement. That's part of the, we actually budgeted only four hundred, at the time we did the budgeting, it was, we hadn't updated some of the, didn't have a chance to update or didn't have the updated values, estimated market values for some of the homes, and then once we got that, it changed to four seventy-nine, but we've still only budgeted four hundred.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all we need, I think.
Very good.
Thank you. I told you have to approve the resolution.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to twenty sixteen dash four five.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay, well, that will move on to Buffalo Aquifer Management, you're not, you're not expecting any more people, I mean, I know you're scheduled for nine o'clock, but if you're ready, go ahead.
We're ready, we're ready.
Okay. And I think we've got, I take it Jason and Christopher, or is that, or you can identify yourself and.
Yeah, my name is Christopher Knutson, I am the Water Division Manager for Moorehead Public Service here in Moorehead.
And I'm Jason Cosmatka, I'm a project manager with Advanced Engineering, A two S.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all today, really excited to talk about the Buffalo Aquifer Protection and Management Project we've had the last couple of years, kind of wanted to bring you up to speed to what we're doing on the Buffalo Aquifer and talk a little bit about some of our protection and management efforts. Feel free to stop me with any questions as we go through the presentation if you happen to have any. First off, we'll talk about Buffalo Aquifer Protection, some of the history and what we've done over the past several years, then we'll go into what Moorehead's been doing in terms of water supply, start looking at some of our future water demands and population projections relative to our future water demands. And then lastly, a big part of the presentation will be long-term drought supply planning, so we've been really accustomed to thinking about flood preparation, flood planning, those types of things, diversion is obviously on everybody's mind, something we haven't thought a lot about is what, what Moorehead and what others would be doing in a drought-type situation, so this is something that we've been working on a couple of years to really be prepared for a drought-type situation and this plan is, really encompasses a lot of our start to drought planning. First off, I wanted to talk a little bit about Buffalo Aquifer Resource Protection, long history of working with Clay County, Moorehead Public Service and Clay County working together to protect the Buffalo Aquifer, some commissioners might remember, in the late nineties, there was truckers in, there were several old truck stops located at three-three-six and nine ninety-four where we had some pretty significant contamination of the aquifer that the county worked to not only remove the contamination, but ultimately put a resource protection overlay district in place. That overlay district has been, I would say, paramount to protecting the aquifer, really enabled protection of the aquifer, which is critical, because Moorehead really depends on the aquifer for a drought-type situation, we'll get more into the detail of the drought situation, just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Clay County to help protect the aquifer, it's absolutely vital, if we can't keep the water in the aquifer protected, doesn't matter how much water is there, we need to make sure that it's protected. One of the things I also want to talk about, it's not on the slide here, but two thousand thirteen, we did wellhead protection planning for the city of Moorehead, Kevin Campbell and I believe Wayne and Chris Oliver both involved in that wellhead protection plan. The wellhead protection planning portion is a state-mandated project where we really look at protection of the aquifer from contamination, what we're talking about today in terms of a Buffalo Aquifer Management Plan, it's actually looking at the quantity of water available in the aquifer and starting to address if enough water would be available in a drought-type situation, so a little different than wellhead protection planning, but still important for the overall health of the aquifer and making sure that enough water is available in a drought situation. Backing up just a little bit, you know, one of the questions we often get, where does, where does Moorehead get its water supply from? Moorehead actually gets about eighty percent of its water from the Red River, this is over between two thousand six and two thousand fifteen, and the rest of the water, about twenty percent, comes from the Buffalo Aquifer and the Moorehead Aquifer. The Moorehead Aquifer is actually a small aquifer located right underneath Buffalo Wild Wings in Moorehead, the Buffalo Aquifer is about a thirty-mile north-south aquifer located right at about Highway ten, if you look at the Buffalo Aquifer South delineation there, you could see that, that the pipeline actually follows Highway ten there and then three-three-six runs north-south right at about where that well field is. Buffalo Aquifer is actually, you know, it's only sixty percent of our withdrawal during this period, so, you know, why is it so important, why are we talking about it? Well, during a drought-type situation, Moorehead would be totally reliant on the Buffalo Aquifer, so even though last ten years have been very wet and we've relied mostly on surface water, during a drought situation, we need to have the Buffalo Aquifer available for drought. You can see, we have two wellfields on the Buffalo Aquifer, the Buffalo Aquifer North wellfield's actually at the northern tip of the aquifer, the South wellfield is, is okay right at Highway ten-three-three-six. Here kind of gives you a picture on the left, kind of gives you a full overview of the extent of the aquifer, how much, how much water is available in the aquifer, it's about two hundred billion gallons of water in the aquifer, about ten percent of that is available for utilization by residents of Clay County and probably available for pumping, it's about twenty billion gallons of water is available. Significantly, if you look on this graph on the right, you can see, I'm pointing out kind of the new water treatment plant in service about nineteen ninety-five, the level of the Buffalo Aquifer since that new treatment plant has been put in place has risen to levels higher than basically when we went out and drilled those wells, that's a really significant thing and it's in stark comparison to many communities in the Twin Cities metro area where they're pumping their aquifers down significantly, taking a lot of groundwater out, even to the point where some of the surface water features in the area are being impacted, White Bear Lake is a, is a great example of that, where a lot of heavy pumping of the aquifer, starting to see some lake impacts in the area. We're seeing the opposite effect, actually, since we've really curtailed a lot of our aquifer usage, seeing much higher levels of waters, the level in the aquifer is actually rising significantly.
I think before this time, Chris, you were about sixty percent surface and forty percent groundwater and now they're eighty-twenty and just reducing that twenty percent has had that much of an impact.
Like Jason alluded to, this is actually total withdrawals from all of our water sources, so if you look at that black line, that's our total withdrawal, the red line is actually the river withdrawal and then the blue line is the groundwater withdrawal. So when we put that new water treatment plan in place, we switched from that sixty-forty ratio to about an eighty-twenty ratio and how much water has that amounted to over that fifteen-twenty year period, ends up being about two, two billion gallons or so of water has been put back into the aquifer as a result of that utilization of surface water, so how much is two billion gallons of water, it's about, familiar with Lake Bemidji, it's about two and a half Lake Bemidjis worth of water has been put back into the aquifer.
Hey, Chris, I, if I can, the, you know, you look at that chart and you, you see that from in the eighties and going up to nineteen ninety, there's, that appears to be the peak drawdown that we've, that we've seen on the aquifer, but that coincides with that last kind of a small dry period that we had too, doesn't it?
We have some critical graphs for that too.
Yeah, because then we, because it seems to me that I think it was right around nineteen ninety or nineteen ninety-two when we got back, starting in this wet cycle again.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's pretty significant.
Kind of confirms it.
You can see it, you know, that's when we really started to draw down the aquifer between eighty-eight and ninety-two.
Right.
Starting to see those levels really decrease as a result of that extended pumping. Just looking at long-term water demand, what, what's our water demand doing for the city, actually, the black line, I know there's a lot going on in this slide, but if you pay attention to that black line, it's actually our peaking factor, so peaking factor represents the ratio of summer usage to winter app. So, peaking factor represents the ratio of summer usage to winter average. In the Twin Cities area, for example, where a lot of people are watering their lawns, you might see a peaking factor of three. So, i.e., they use three times as much water in the summer versus the winter, wintertime. In Morehead, if you follow that black line, we've been pretty stable around one point five. So, we use about one point five times more water in the summer than we do in the winter. We don't do a lot of lawn watering, which is a great thing for conservation here. You can see our peak, if you follow those red bars on the chart, you can see the peak demands have been very stable, and our average demands, those blue, blue bars, have also been relatively stable, pretty much around four million gallons since nineteen ninety-six. That's actually been a positive thing for MPS because we haven't had to expand a lot of infrastructure. We haven't had to really expand our water treatment plant or anything like that because the capacity has remained relatively stable. Why is that? Well, actually, if you look at our per capita water demand, it's decreased very significantly since nineteen ninety-six. We've seen a general trend towards decreasing water usage, and that's primarily due to point-of-use devices. So, people installing water fishing toilets, water fishing fixtures, has had a significant impact on our total water demands. It's enabled us really to have a stable water average output. While the population of Morehead and Clay County have grown, we've maintained a relatively stable average. Looking at our future demand projections, a couple of things I'll kind of highlight on this slide, I know there's also a lot going on in this slide, but a couple of things, if you look at the purple line, that's our population projection going out to twenty ninety. And then, we have two horizontal lines, one is a horizontal red line, one is a horizontal black line. If you look at the horizontal red line, we're actually in twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, going to kind of go beyond our current capacity for our water treatment plant. So, we have a ten million gallon-per-day surface water treatment plant. At that twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty area, we're going to expand. Our max date demands will be higher than our treatment plant capacity. The black line, twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, our average day demands are actually going to go over what our current wellfield demands are. That's a significant threshold because we want to have enough groundwater capacity available to meet our average day demands, such that if we had some type of contamination event on the Red River, we could meet all of our capacity with groundwater. So, twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, looking at expansion of probably on the Buffalo Aquifer, and Jason will be talking a little bit more about that, kind of alluding to why we're looking at expansion on the Buffalo Aquifer and why it's necessary. So, those are a couple of the reasons we're looking at it.
I just have a question. It would be interesting, excuse me, to see this graph in more of an even increments, like you start with the one year, one year, one year, and then, it goes to five years, and then, it goes to all the way up to thirty years. And it would be interesting, just from my perspective, to see what that equal-continual growth is. You know, it, it looks like a huge spike at the end, and I'm sure it is. But do you see what I mean? It's not a consistent.
Right.
So, it's kind of hard to gauge where exactly that spike will occur, or if it's just a gradual increase.
We just wanted to take a long-term look, you know, because the, when you're planning for water infrastructure, you're often planning thirty, fifteen years out. That's why we kind of had that breakaway at the end there. So, it, it does add a little distortion, it's good.
And those are the population projections, I think somebody mentioned, they are based on MetroCog projections for the surface area of MPS.
So, again, I've kind of talked a little bit about why we've been looking at developing an aquifer management plan. Again, this is not a state-mandated plan, but something that we're looking at for drought planning conditions and making sure that enough water is available in a drought. So, it's really something new in terms of water resources that a lot of cities and utilities haven't looked at, but it's something that we wanted to evaluate, in particular because Fargo and some other, Fargo Grant Works and other communities in the area are looking at a long-term drought supply project. Morehead made a significant decision this past fall to kind of bow out of that project. It's the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. Based on the results of what we've included in the plan, we've kind of decided that we have enough water available in our own resource of the Buffalo Aquifer to certainly, to really have enough water available for a drought-type situation.
We're in the plan of bringing it in from the garrison.
That's correct. So, kind of with that, Jason's going to dive into some of the technical planning portions of the plan. Oh, go ahead.
So, the water, you have, so you have two lines coming in from the aquifer.
Right.
One from each of the aquifers. And do those, do those go directly to the plant?
They do. Yep. Our water treatment plant is located just north of Buffalo Wild Wings. You saw that north wellfield, that south wellfield, they both come directly into the water treatment plant. We treat it there and then pump it out to the residents. Good question. Questions?
Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about why did we develop the Buffalo Aquifer Management Plan. Chris, I already mentioned, one of the biggest reasons is in that twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five period, the average day demand is going to exceed what they can physically pump right now from the aquifer. So, if they did have to go to a hundred percent groundwater, which they had, have had to do in the recent past, I think about five years ago, they did an upgrade to their raw water intake treatment facility on the Red River. So, they had to shut down all the Red River waters. So, four years ago, you're a hundred percent groundwater. So, if that would happen in the future, they're going to be basically maxed out by twenty twenty, twenty-five. So, we looked at, we wanted to define, or define the available capacity of the Buffalo Aquifer, evaluate current and future pumping scenarios, and we used a worst-case scenario. We looked at drought, which is a nineteen thirties drought. So, that was basically a ten-year extended drought. And MPS hired a hydrogeologist firm called Leggett, Bashir's and Graham to do the hydraulic groundwater modeling. And this is one of the, basically, this graph shows a lot. This is the drought history for the area, based on the Palmer Drought Index, it's a national index, but this index is right for the Red River Valley area. And they, we were able to compile information from this all the way back to eighteen ninety-five. And this shows, I think you were talking about that drought right here. So, everything below zero is a drought, and everything above is a wet period. And as you can see, since, you know, ninety-three, we've been in a wet cycle. And, you know, looking at this whole graph, it is cyclical. So, MPS has a foresight to know that it's not if a drought is going to happen again, it's probably when a drought is going to happen again. And one thing to note that we were able to find some information on, during this nineteen thirties drought, in nineteen thirty-four, the Red River actually ran dry for five months here in Fargo. So, if that happens again, you know, what's our contingency plan for that? LBG, they were the hydrogeologists, they did a couple, well, they did actually several different groundwater models. I'm only going to show you two models right now. They did a worst-case scenario for a ten-year drought. Worst-case scenario basically means that there's zero recharge, so no snow, no rainfall, that's actually penetrating deep enough and recharging the aquifer. And they were pumping five M G D, and right now, Chris said, the average day demand is approximately four, four-point-two M G D. But at five M G D, with a zero recharge, you could pump the Buffalo Aquifer for about six years before you drew down the aquifer to this level. And, you know, not to get too specific, but this drawdown level is about seventy feet below ground service, the ground surface, and that's about where their existing screens are on their well. So, any lower than that, their wells, you know, will cavitate and, you know, let air in there. So, that's how they figured out that level they want to. So, six years of pumping with just the existing north and well, north and south wellfield on the Buffalo Aquifer. Another scenario, pumping six seventy-five M G D, so a little bit more, which would carry us through an average day demand of, to about twenty forty. And this is the north and the south existing wellfield, and then, a proposed wellfield that LBG determined was the best place to put, put the new wellfield. And with this scenario, again, same scenario down to this level, they could get about nine years of pumping the aquifer to get down that level. So, zero Red River, the drive, they were able to get nine years' worth of raw water.
When you say a proposed wellfield, where would that be at?
In one of the next slides I'll show you.
Question.
Where are we moving to that?
Sure.
In your previous slide, what is, if the natural trends of drought to dry, dry years to white years? Right. So, in the worst-case scenario, six to nine years, right, nine with the new?
Right, so...
That's, that would basically carry you through what these natural...
It would carry us, maybe, we have probably about twelve years of drought here. So, it would carry us through nine, a little over nine years of that drought. You know, we haven't seen anything that significant since then, and we only have data back to eighteen ninety-five.
Not that I want to open up a can of worms here with global warming, but is there, is there anything that shows in your science data that maybe like in the, in the last fifty or sixty years versus the, going back to eighteen ninety-five, that we're seeing a significantly more recharge than we might be seeing drought?
We've been, tried to look at that and do some statistical modeling, but with all the variables and global warming and, you know, the average of, what is it, one degree of average temperature of the earth right now, is that causing more evaporation and then it's more rain? So, it's so hard to...
There's nothing out there that...
No.
Thank you.
So, basically, now that we figured if we extend the Buffalo Aquifer and add a new wellfield, we're able to provide water for approximately nine years. Now, the other part of this is putting together a drought monitoring program. This is a program to basically measure the intensity of a drought, so we want to put a numerical value to a drought, we want to quantify it. To do this, we put several different factors together. We're using two national indices. These are the Palmer Drought Severity Index and the Standard Precipitation Index. These are done for the whole nation, and they're done also by regions. And we put basically a fifteen percent weighing factor in each of these. And then, we use three different local parameters. Stream flows got the highest because that's where MPS gets eighty percent of the water. So, the Red River, the Boise Sioux, and Otter Tail River get a fifty percent weighing factor. And then, the two reservoirs, Orowild Reservoir and Lake Travers get ten percent. And then, groundwater levels of the north Buffalo, south Buffalo, and Morehead Aquifer. And with that, those different weighing factors, we put together a spreadsheet, and it weighs the different, you put in all the numbers, it weighs, weighs these different factors and spits out a number from zero to a hundred. And so, basically, from zero to twenty-five, you're in a normal drought condition. Twenty-five to fifty, you're in advisory and so on and so forth. And these will, where you end up, based on the different levels of the aquifers or the reservoirs and so forth. And one of these, you know, reasons for this is that, once we know what stage we're in, MPS, we haven't done it yet, we haven't got that far, but basically, we can start, instead of eighty, eighty percent surface water, twenty percent ground, we can start moving to more groundwater, less surface water, because a drought's not going to affect the reservoir anywhere as quickly as it will affect their surface water. And just to calibrate this model and spreadsheet, we put together the information that we could find to fill in the spreadsheet all the way back to nineteen fifty-two. And as you can see, from nineteen fifty-two to current time, we've only had two level threes. One was in the late, late eighties, and the other was in the mid-seventies. And we've never had an emergency, emergency drought. I'm pretty sure the nineteen thirties would have been, but we didn't have information to put back in that time. So, as part of this, another part of the drought, the drought reaction level is these stages. Once you get to certain stages, and now, this is just an example, MPS has not adopted this yet, but they could, in the event of a drought, they could adopt all these different things, but it goes anywhere from odd-even watering restrictions, which might even be on the books, but aren't as right now. Right now, but not, unenforced, to all the way to rescinding all non-essential water use. So, that would mean shutting off car washes. I think the city of Fairmont, Minnesota, three years ago, shut off all car washes for a summer because their lake levels were so low. And then, a lot of community education, other ways, and a four would be basically only necessary water use, which is something we probably haven't seen since the thirties. So, since we know, from the modeling, we're pretty sure that the aquifer could supply the water. We put together a drought management plan, now, what do you do with that information? And I think this is the graphs, or the graphs that you want to see. Covered this already, the north aquifer, existing north Buffalo Aquifer, south, and then, the Morehead Aquifer is right here. And those are the existing raw water lines. With LBG's help, we found basically four different potential sites for wellfields. The red indicates higher transmissivity, so easier pumping capacity for the wells. So, it's kind of hard to read, but this is potential wellfield number one, two and three, and two and three are combined, because all scenarios, and then, that pumping scenario did combine two and three, and then, potential wellfield number four. And with these three different, basically, three different potential wellfields, we also had to look at, you know, getting that raw water to the water treatment plant. So, we looked at, this is three alignments, or three or four alignments. So, the north Buffalo alignment is taking water from these wellfields, heading north, and then, actually going north of Dilworth, around town, I'm sorry, tying into this existing line, so there would no longer be a raw water transmission pipe in town, tying to this one a mile north, and then tying into this existing line, and then bringing that back into the Morehead Water Treatment Plant. The south Buffalo alignment is, again, these two wellfields, north, tying into this one, but now, we would be going through Dilworth, which everyone knows is not going to be fun, but we'd use alternate trenchless technology, pipe bursting, where you basically, you slip the new pipe inside of the old pipe and you burst it, and then, you pull it along as you're going. Still, there would be some disruption, but these are just different alignments that we looked at. The Saban alignment would actually, again, take these two wellfields straight west and then northwest to the water treatment plant. This would probably be the easiest route, but with this route, we're not capturing this older. I think Chris has had problems with this raw water transmission pipe in the past, so it really wants it to be replaced. So, this alignment is easiest, but doesn't resolve anything over here. And then, the south Buffalo, Buffalo, Buffalo alignment is a worst-case scenario. This would actually be, and we did this because we wanted to know if we did all these different wellfields. So, we would take wellfield number four north, and obviously, these are quarters, so you can tell by the miles, all the way, catch this, two wellfields, tie into this existing pipe, go all the way north, catch that one, and then, back around. And these different alignments have a cost estimate range from about fifteen million to twenty-nine million. These are just rough estimates, and, you know, we haven't gone behind the high-level planning stage yet, but that's what we've seen so far.
What is the quality of the...
You can ask that.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty hard, it's hard, it's hard water. Generally, the water quality doesn't vary that much between our north and south wellfields. There's some subtlety there, but it's, I believe, like four hundred and eighty parts of hardness total. It's pretty hard, but it's, it's easily treatable. We have a lime softening treatment pipe that we can soften that water very easily. It's, for our practical, for our purposes, very, very good water.
And the Morehead Aquifer is the worst, hardest-to-treat water. And more...
It's, the Morehead Aquifer is actually a lot softer than the Buffalo Aquifer, but it has a D E P precursor. So, this invention by product precursor, so it's a little tougher for us to use than Morehead.
What is, what is the timeline for completing all of this?
We're, we're still looking at the timeline. The timeline is dependent on funding, obviously, when you're talking fifteen-plus million dollars. Generally, probably twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we're looking at starting that.
Okay, so within fewer than five years?
Yeah.
And the one way to generate, you have to generate the revenue by raising water rates, I mean, isn't that pretty much...
Right, there's some, one of the things we'd be looking at, potentially some loan interest, state loan funding. There's some potential for that for this particular project. So, that'll be one of the kind of key decision points, if we can use that funding. There's also some federal legislation in the works to fund these types of projects. So, we're, funding's a big piece of the puzzle, but you're absolutely right, at the end of the day, water rates are going to have to go up too.
Thank you.
At what point does it become more difficult for Morehead to pump so far more of its wells for a longer city? You know, as Morehead's moved farther south, and would, if you had to go with the south Saban Aquifer, would pumping it in along fifty-two and adding another treatment plant on the south side of the city help the pumping water around, or not?
Typically, you want to keep your treatment infrastructure all together, so that would be possible, but we've, you know, our treatment plant, roughly now, you'd be about a hundred and fifty million dollars with the infrastructure we have in place there. But we've, you know, our treatment plant roughly now would be about a hundred and fifty million dollars with the infrastructure we have in place there. And so our strategy is to get that water to the treatment plant, treat it and then distribute it.
So then maybe that wasn't the best question. I, I thought I was at a meeting where I heard that, that as the city continues to go so far south, it gets to be a challenge to pump water so far south. So, so is there an update on the infrastructure areas of the current treatment facility?
We just have to add more water towers, things, things of that nature. That's looking at the treated water specifically. Here, we're just talking about getting the raw untreated water to the treatment facility. In places like the Twin Cities where they don't, you know, oftentimes they'll treat the water at the well. That would be something you do is you'd add your well field in the southern part of the city, hook it up to the distribution system and go. That's a tip, that's not what we would do here because we just take it to a treatment.
And you have to have that scenario in-house water softener and all that stuff to treat that.
Um, this is kind of the.
Yeah, I want to, I want to have a couple of questions that goes, going back to your, your slides where we showed that based, based on the two lines, in a, in a drought scenario, we would have six, I think you said six and a half years. Is that correct?
Well, six years.
Six years. With two lines, we get six years. Now, is, is the Buffalo Aquifer all one same aquifer? My understanding of aquifers, there's, there's peaks and valleys. Is that the same in this case? Okay, uh, because, so we, when you've talked about that drawdown, getting to that, to where you just said it hit our screens. If you're doing that with, with two, by having a third line, how do you, how do you, how do you still not? How, how can you get three more years?
Yeah, the, so right now we're on that northern tier of the aquifer. Think of it like a, you know, you're starting to pump that northern tier pretty heavily. You'll actually draw down.
So you're not drawing the whole aquifer.
No, you're just drawing down, you're seeing a lot of localized drawdown.
Right.
Drawing that northern tier down significantly, if you add that third.
You're, you're, you're taking down, you're taking from a different valley.
It's called the cone of influence. So it has, it's a cone shape that when you draw well, and then if you have the well is too close, your cone of influence affects each other. Then you start drawing everything down faster. And you know, granted with this, this is like I said, high level preliminary. We'd have to do pumping tests and aquifer tests. And the pumping tests do show how close can we put the wells together before we start affecting each other.
Because you want, you want to be certain that you're kind of in a different valley, right?
Yep.
With that third line.
Far enough away so they don't, and you know, we have to make sure we don't affect other domestic wells in the area or agricultural wells and that kind of stuff. And the DNR works with us.
I, I just want to understand that, so the Buffalo Aquifer, it still has its peaks and valleys.
And you can see in this, in the color representation in the slide, kind of Jason was alluding to the red areas or the deeper areas. So it's, it's actually shaped kind of like if you look at a diamond from the side, it's got that kind of shape like this. And we want to, with addition to that well field, draw more of the well field down, not just that northern tier.
Thank you. So Buffalo, Buffalo Aquifer expansion, the benefits will obviously be able to increase the flexibility of the water supply. So they will have a water source in terms of a long-term drought. Infrastructure, like we said, if the raw water intake on Red River, if something go bad with that, we have a backup water plan. And then for also provide a comprehensive risk management strategy for surface water contamination. If something from a lift station or wastewater treatment plant hit the river, we could actually wait for that to bypass the intake and switch to groundwater. Concerned, we're all concerned about making sure that the, the sustainability of the Buffalo Aquifer. And then, and then MPS will have a water treatment plant operational strategy where we'd use those drought categories, drought stages, where they change how much water they blend from the two different sources. This timeline was kind of brought up, so basically started from year zero, just so whenever they want to start this process. It's going to be about a four-year process with the aquifer testing, funding, preliminary engineering, and then, you know, easements and land construction. We're looking at a four-year period and I think that one slide said that the average day demand will exceed the groundwater pumping capacity in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, so it's, you know, that's why it's on the horizon for Chris and MPS. Conclusions, MPS currently utilizes eighty percent surface water and twenty percent groundwater. They've been, the aquifer levels have been significantly rising, about twenty feet higher than they were pre nineteen ninety-five. Establish a drought monitor and tracking forum, so we can actually quantify how bad of a drought is. And then we, with the modeling, we've shown that the Buffalo Aquifer could be used as a sole source for MPS for an extended period of time during a drought. And we've talked about the range of initial, initial capital costs, about fifteen to twenty-eight point five million.
I have just one last question that I noticed on, on, on both of the lines, the one that currently comes in on Highway ten and the northern one. If I, if I read right, those are, the one on Highway ten is sixteen that drops to twelve inch, is that correct?
Yeah.
And the one north is sixteen. If, if you're not, if you're not taking, if you're now getting a hundred percent of your capacity in, in a drought from those lines, is, is that, is that enough size to, to, I mean, I, we have, you have twelve inch lines that go up and feed Oakport. And I, you know, and I'm just wondering, is that, are those capacity wise, are they significant enough to?
They, they are. Jason kind of alluded to the Highway ten line. We have some, we have some issues there because it's old material, it was put in the nineteen fifties, so that, that castor pipe has corroded such that we're starting to see, you know, breaks on several portions of it. So as part of this project, we'd likely include replacement and upsizing of that line to accommodate for future higher flows because of another well field down south. So right now, you know, the five and a half million gallons per day, we can hit that with the existing infrastructure. But if you have a long-term pumping period where you depend a hundred percent on that pumping infrastructure, it's not adequate.
So you wouldn't need additional, additional line or larger, more capacity?
Correct.
How much area does Moorhead serve in it? You got Oakport in there now.
Yep.
And I know you got Dilworth in there.
Correct.
Do you, so is it just in city limits of these areas or you go out to the rural area at all, down city limits or?
It's just within Moorhead city limits and Dilworth. So Dilworth is a wholesale customer of Moorhead. So we, you know, if it's not within Moorhead city limits, we typically don't serve it. There are a few exceptions where we have water main that's located to unannexed areas. But for the most part, it's within city limits.
Is that it? Okay.
That's it.
Well, you know, I really, I don't know if there's any more questions, but I really want to thank you. As you can see, you generated some interest amongst us here. Now, Brian, did you have some?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Just a quick question. Who controls the access to the Buffalo, the, the aquifer? Is it DNR?
It's DNR.
Okay, so for.
So with this whole process, we'd have to get some more DNR groundwater appropriations. We'd have to go through that whole process and that's where we have to do the pumping test. And you have to locate all domestic agriculture and other wells within like a four-mile radius or something like that.
Because I would think they'd be a little stingy on irrigation for cropland around here when you've got a major city that needs to be furnished water or they should shut it off at a certain time or whatever, but they do control that permitting.
And DNR has been looking more closely at the permitting process. The last several years, they've really revised a lot of permits that are out there as a result of, my impression is a result of the continued pumping down in the Twin Cities and that sort of area.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I think, I think it was very interesting. Thank you. Dennis, did you have something to add there or?
No, I just keep the water process and support our staff here.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Okay, to continue on the water process, Bruce, you want to bring Jay and Jerry and John along up? We can bring some more chairs up here. We got, we got enough chairs. Brought you in with the group right away there, yeah? Okay, Bruce, I guess we're talking about petition for watershed district, okay?
Taxing authority. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Looking in my notes, this is the seventh year in a row, I guess we've been back here to seek your approval or use of a taxing authority provided to us in accordance with Minnesota Watershed Law, Chapter one oh three D. This is a local taxation applied across the entire watershed district. And of course, the taxation allows us to do many of the things that we work with. And of course, that list always seems to get longer rather than shorter. And one of the new items, of course, that's on there is this whole buffer law. And we hope to be meeting with you as the Clay County Board of Commissioners in the next month or so to start talking about some of those issues. Because enforcement and who's going to handle what is, is coming upon us very quickly. What other waters in Clay County are going to need buffering and et cetera. But it, you know, it never ends with the watershed, with the ditches and, and projects and, and new projects. You know, happy to say, and Commissioner Campbell would know that, that Oakport now is almost completed. There's just some cleanup left to do, thirty-six million dollar project. It's nice to have that done. I think the overlay on your Wall Street went well and looks good. And we do intend this spring to hold a ceremony acknowledging completion of that project. And interestingly, that's the twenty-year anniversary, which I cannot believe.
Thank you, seven, yeah?
Yeah, so we will hold an open house. I think many of the people up there are new and, and we've got some video that Greg and Kevin took, provided during the flood. People probably don't remember what happened up there. So this is quite an improvement to have Oakport done. But again, the, the things that we're working on, we're working on new projects. It takes funding to, to make the watershed tick. We held the line, the budget is in essence the same for two thousand seventeen as it was in two thousand sixteen. So we kept that the same. You can see from the various documents that, you know, the proposed budget for the use of the two taxing authorities. One is a general levy totaling six sixty-one, one sixty-two and various projects and programs listed beneath that, that those funds would be used for. The second levy is more generic and, or I mean, shouldn't be generic, but project specific, and that pertains to Manston Slough. So that's done, that is a flood control project in Wilken County, which is operational. And if you all know the value of, of flood damage reduction. I also included this year something new, kind of an annual levy comparison, so you can see what the watershed levy has done since fourteen, fifteen, two thousand sixteen and seventeen. And of course, the very modest or trying to keep things exactly the same from sixteen to seventeen. And then last but not least, of course, is total revenues and expenditures. And what you see with the watershed is usually what comes in in revenue, and it does vary. One year, I guess two thousand three was less than a million dollars and of course, two thousand ten was fourteen million dollars. So we get a lot of grant funding through the DNR, et cetera. And what comes in goes back out on the ground is projects. That's revenues usually equal expenditures and that's projects conservation on the ground. So we would ask, you know, your consideration for approval of those two levies. By law, they need to be petitioned for by a political subdivision. Of course, Clay County meets that requirement and would be happy to answer any questions you may have about anything you have in front of you or about the Buffalo Red River watershed. Also want to mention, thank you for your appointment. We hated to lose Bria. She moved to North Dakota, seven years on the board. In fact, I just picked up her retirement plaque this morning. And we welcome Jay. We've known Jay a long time and welcome his expertise on the board.
So are you familiar with all that Buffalo Aquifer stuff?
So you're looking at an increase of the zero zero seven nine eight for, I see we got two, two resolutions there?
That is correct, Commissioner Gross. Yeah, the first levy is what we call our general levy, petition number one, and that would raise the six sixty-one, one sixty-two. And then the second levy being project specific for Manston Slough. And the funding for Manston Slough, that was a six million dollar project. We brought in about seventy-five percent outside funding. So do the math, we're about a million and a half dollars short. There was some benefited landowners that were assessed and now we're making up the difference in terms of the bond sale. So we just mailed your auditor a check here last week for, anybody remember? How much?
Hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Hundred and seventy-one thousand, so the taxation there is to bring in the local funds committed to that project.
I was going to say, I, I did attend that annual budget hearing at the end of August and there was really good dialogue. There's some great projects that are, that are going forward. I will make a motion to approve the, is it a resolution or is it a? Well, let me get it before I.
Okay, Kevin?
Both, are they resolutions?
Two resolutions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve both of the resolutions brought forward.
Okay, all right, Kevin. The, so the, the Manston Slough, the five hundred thousand, is, is that to cover a one-year payment on the bond?
That would cover, that hasn't been assessed or?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell, that would cover the local commitment from the watershed district through the statutory requirement of the one oh three D, nine oh five subdivision three. Again, we picked up about a million and a half dollars local, some to assessment, some to the watershed. This would be the last of that commitment to, to cover the local share of those project costs. And you know, that was completed actually in two thousand fifteen, so.
So this goes away next?
This goes away, just as, and I can't hardly believe this, the new building loan, I think that has always been part of the tax. Yeah, we're, we got our last payment coming up here February first, so five years we've been in our.
Time flies when you're having fun. So, so the, the total between these two, we're still, you're still showing that it's a slight decrease. Or it's an increase in dollars, but a decrease in actual levy to property owners because of the new territory, is that correct?
Yeah, the new territory has been taxed now, starting in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And of course, what we know is market values continue to go up. And I think I put somewheres in the correspondence, Commissioner, the total taxable market value of the watershed right now is eight point two billion. So it's a, a large number. And like I said, that continues to go up, so. We, I think you know, last March and, and due to some health issues, I did not be able, was not able to attend those meetings. But the board did hold a series of three meetings throughout the district, the correspondence references that. We met with landowners, I think probably close to a hundred people attended. And it was a good information, coordination, education session. We talked about flood damage reduction, the cost of flood damage reduction, where and how possible projects might be located and built and ways to, to fund those. We're looking at some right now and given the cost of an acre foot of storage, somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars an acre foot, eight, ten thousand acre foot of storage gets expensive real quick. And where is that money going to come from? I believe we still have an open dialogue with the Red Board. They are going through some things right now, almost as we speak. I know there's some meetings being held as to just what role all of these agencies play in the Red River Basin. You've got the Red River Retention Authority and the Red River Watershed Management Board and the International Water Institute and the Red River Basin Commission. Five, six, seven agencies and where, what role can we, each of them play? So they're going through that, we keep an open dialogue with them and, you know, and. very cognizant that that is one potential source of funding when the need should arise.
All right, any further questions? Now we've got a motion to approve both resolutions. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we, do we have a second, Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Guess the motion passed.
Merry Christmas to all of you, and look forward to working with you in 2017. Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, I never did ask if you guys had anything to add there, Jared.
Thank you.
He did, he did all, all we...
Does a great job, doesn't he? Thank you, Bruce. Merry Christmas. Okay, with that, we'll go back to budget, I guess, here, or levy for next year. Lori and... Making it done today?
Brian's sporting a tie today.
Give us the good news.
Well, good morning again, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yeah, well, good news, I guess it is. What we'd like to present to you today is the resolution, and for the, the first item is for the county, let's see, I gotta look at, the levy. So, it would be that, what's on the resolution form. And that's for the county levy of 29,282,262. I think we have, I don't know if you want to discuss budgets today, that's, we presented last week again, or was it the week before, the budget information? And Lori put together the resolution to approve the levy, and I'd ask for your support on it today.
Okay. Moving to approve.
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion on? All in favor? All right. Post? Motion passes, levy is at 29,000, whichever, that affect, what's that, four point something?
Well...
A net of 4.18.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, the second item for your approval today, or consideration and possible approval is the 2017 budget identifying the different funds and the revenue and the expenditures sources. Again, this is something that our auditor puts together and is here to answer the questions. So, we'd ask for approval of that, unless there's questions as well.
Well, we, we based the previous resolution on this budget.
Yes, we did.
So, it's going to be kind of awkward to not approve this budget if we just approve the...
Yes, it would be.
I'm thinking aloud here.
Second.
Any further comments?
Just want to make a comment. I know our staff has put a lot of time and effort into compiling this for us, and I appreciate that. But I also want to thank the citizens, this is a large chunk of money. And I know that being elected means that there's a lot of responsibility on our shoulders. And I just want to reiterate to the community that we do our best to be as responsible as possible with their dollars, so thank you to them.
Yes, Chair, I think Commissioner Mojo really says a lot with that comment. Because even in the meeting that we attended yesterday afternoon with our legislators in reference to the cost and how the shift has been, there was, you know, about a $300,000 shift just in those, the civil commitment costs that you guys have been now asked to bear, to bear the cost of. And you know what, we've gone through this during the budget cycle, but our costs have really increased due to human demands, the jail, the juvenile center, the out-of-home placements. And it's showing up in higher costs to your taxpayer, and they are being asked to pay for it, so that says volumes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it.
At the same, at the same point, and I agree with what Commissioner Mojo said too, at the same point, are there, the areas that you talked about, Brian, it should be very alarming and concerning to everybody in this county as to what's, what's taking place. And, and I for one am willing to say that with its current escalation in cost, it's not sustainable. It simply is not. So, equally important is to find solutions that we have to do for this, because it is just not sustainable. Or we're going to have this place absolutely jam-packed with people with real concerns over, over the spending. And it's in these areas where there's kids involved, you know, but we have to come up with some solutions, so.
Okay, we've got a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I don't know, is that Mr. Dolls going to show up or not? Well, why don't we move, Mark, you're here, can we take yours? This is going to be item number 11, approval of G.I.S. software.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here at Clay County, we operate a very robust, capable, mature G.I.S. system. We have two full-time staff. We manage 380 layers of information. We deliver that to our users through software, and that software is either desktop software, server software, we also have web server software. We handle about a half a million hits a month on our online mapping sites. And to make all that work, it takes some pretty sophisticated software, is what we're talking about today, to make it function. There's a firm called ESRI that we've worked with since we've started, it's a commonly-used firm. They came out with a program in 2008 that allows small governments, which we qualify to be, to pay a fee, it's called an enterprise license agreement. And what that fee does, it gives us a flat rate of cost, and then we can deploy what software we need. So, instead of having to figure out who can have it, who can't, how would we afford it, that kind of stuff, we pay an upfront cost, and it gives us the capabilities that we need to provide the software. We signed three-years, three-year contracts to do that, and our contract is up at the end of 2016. We first contracted with them in 2008, 11, 14, and now 17 would be the next one. So, what this contract does, it'll be a three-year contract, it provides us with the G.I.S. software that we would use as a county. It costs us $35,000 a year. I was concerned when we did budgeting, you just heard about the budget talks last summer, I was, I knew that our contract was up, and I was wondering how much the cost increase would be. And we were able to talk with them and get a handle on, our cost only went up $2,000 a year, so we didn't have to change our budget too much. Actually, it fit with where we were, we were able, actually, go back a little bit. That, it, it's a pretty significant amount of money as far as some things go, but it provides us with some pretty robust software. If we were to purchase individually the pieces that we're using, it would cost quite a bit more. So, it gives us much more capability for the same amount of money, or less money, actually, depending on how we would look at it. So, I'm here today to say we'd like to enter into our enterprise license agreement with ESRI for a three-year term, starting in 2017.
Do we put this out for bid at all, or do we?
No, it's off the state contract. And there's not really any other firms that do this, that type of thing of what we're doing. And we, they have a, through state of Minnesota, we get the pricing that we get. So, we just follow that. There wouldn't really be another option.
What was the previous price?
We were paying $33,000 a year.
Okay, so that's the 2,000.
And now it's 35, for it now be the three-year term. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. No, sorry.
Okay, we'll take a short break right now. With that, question, waived late payment tax penalty for Mr. Dahl. Do you want to come forward, please?
Cheryl, you can come.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm just, it's pretty simple, I just moved from Fargo, lived in the same house for 29 years. And they don't collect taxes in October in Fargo, and I overlooked the paperwork. We bought the house on August 19th, moved in in September, and I just overlooked the paperwork, clean and simple. But I have a lot of good reasons for it, but that's important to you, I've got to tell you.
Yeah, we read your letter here that concerning your wife, and...
Yeah, my, we moved to Dilworth because our son and daughter live in Dilworth. They built a home like Croatia's Drive a few years ago. And then, my wife has ALS, and she's crippled, and we're raising our nine and 10-year-old daughters, so we had to move to a one-level house. And lots going on, and we haven't had much help until recently on that side.
Well, it's a Dilworth residence, thanks for moving to Dilworth there.
I could pay taxes here now.
I'll make a motion to approve the waived penalty.
Commissioner, I would second it and note that it does, it does meet what we've used for consideration in the past, so.
Okay, we've got a mo, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm hard of hearing, I apologize.
Oh, we've got a motion to approve your request.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
And we're going to vote on it right now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's been approved.
Well, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you too. Thanks for moving over to Clay County.
Okay, with that, we go on to Dave and Eric.
I'm going to switch it up, I'm sitting over here today. Oh, my gosh. What a guy.
Congratulations on your family's addition.
Yeah, thank you, he's about a month old now, so, doing good. Still getting used to the sleep part of things, but...
It never changes, buddy.
Jenny? Never.
It doesn't even when they get to be 35, 36, 37, you don't sleep.
Right, you still have all the, you have concern, just different kinds of concern, right?
Yep, everything goes away. Little kids, little problems, big kids, big problems.
Not Mojo boys. They're huge problems.
Okay, let's take it, you've got quite a few items you want to go to here?
Yeah.
You want to start with the contract amendment with Houston Engineering?
Sure. Eric passed out a sheet there that will tie into kind of the last part of that. I'll have him kind of run through, did everybody get a copy of the contract amendment from Houston? So, it identifies quite a few different parts of a project, and maybe I'll have Eric kind of just walk through those.
Okay.
So, as you probably know, we've been working with Houston as part of the county campus expansion, working with the jail and the LAC, and then a lot of the parking utilities that go along with that. And we obviously led the project in September this year for utility work, and then the gravel parking lot. And most of that work is complete now, although that's the first item on this amendment, is a budget adjustment for the engineering on that project. And just to kind of go into a little detail as to why the budget, they're requesting the budget adjustment, is, we did run into a few unforeseen things when we started working on the project. On Eighth Avenue there, we peeled back the asphalt parking lot, and there was actually a concrete road underneath it. So, that was unexpected. And then just a few other little utility hiccups, you know, we uncovered some more bad water lines, and we decided to replace them. And all in all, it ended up being more of a full-time inspection for the engineer side of things. So, that's kind of the explanation on that first construction services amendment.
We did kind of back calculate those, so their original estimate for part-time engineering services was, was quite, you know, a good rule of thumb is 7%. So, 7% of the bid, which was about 840-some thousand dollars, would have been like 58,000 dollar engineering fees, they were, they were way underneath that. So, even with the additional 15,000, which would make up for some of the full-time services, we didn't feel comfortable not having them here full-time when they started finding water lines that weren't on the plans, and, and just tying into the buildings and things. So, I guess, we feel that 15,000 is justified based on the fact they spent the time out there, and, and we needed them out there as well. And I don't know, maybe Brian would echo that. I think, I think Houston did a really good job on the project, and I feel pretty comfortable all the, anytime you dig down in, you know, areas that's maybe up to 60 years old, you always find different things, and it actually worked out pretty good.
Yeah, wait.
So, number one year is about 15,000.
Yes, yep.
Thank you. And I assume this has been through highway traffic?
No, it is not.
I'll move to approve regular...
Second, item number one.
Second.
We do have a few other parts to go with that.
Okay.
So, yeah, as part of that contract amendment, the first part is the 15,000. And then, as part of the continued expansion, if you look to the map I just handed out there, we do have a blue outline at the northwest parking lot, and then also in front of the courthouse. And this amendment also includes fees for the design engineering for reconstructing those parking lots and getting them paved, landscaping, lighting, pretty much the whole package to reconstruct those parking lots.
That's all part of the 15,000, yeah?
Nope, those would be the next two items, which are 17,500 for the northwest parking lot.
Do we take these separately?
It would be all part of one contract.
Well, yes, it's part of the one contract, Mr. Chair, if I may. But I think since the 15,000 is in the past, I think for clarity, we'd like to see that approved. And then, the other, the next ones are amendments for future work, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so...
Okay, since we've got a motion on that first item, that 15,000, we've got a second on that. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the parking lot thing, we've got that covered now, okay?
On pages two and three, it's kind of broken into four additional items. The first item, like Eric said, is the northwest parking lot design. The second, the bottom part of page two, is the design for the area parking lot right in front of the courthouse, that'll be expanded. The third, on page three there on the top, that would be for the family service centers. We were looking at doing, well, we did a bunch of work over there this year with concrete sidewalks and things, we were going to do a mill and overlay, just kind of do administration on that in-house with our maintenance guys. We decided to wait till we did all these parking lots, so this would be surveyed and designed for the overlay in front of the family service center. And then the last item there is just basically the coordination with utilities, is that right? More in public service, NEXL and GR are probably the two biggest players, but there was a very small amount. We did go through this initially with Houston, their numbers were a little bit higher, and these are all estimates, are they not to exceed estimates, do you know? Not to exceed estimates, so we're not guaranteed we'll pay this amount, only if the amount of hours reaches it. But we did kind of refine these a little bit, the numbers were a little bit higher, especially like the family service center, we didn't think that would take near, I think they had $10,000 or maybe 15,000, but we, we realized that the amount of work is a little less. So, we, we did refine these a little bit before we brought them to you guys. And then on the, on the back page, on page four there, the last item in their, their adjustment is a county campus replat. So, that takes into account the two blocks that we leveled, and maybe some of the street vacations, is that right, Brian?
Yes.
Yeah. So, there's a small amount of time working with us on the replat as well, so.
So, is this all part of the budget for the jail, or is this, what budget this has come out of?
I was going to ask that too. Mr. Chairman, I, I think the, certainly the, on page, on page two, the two items on page two are related to the correctional facility slash LAC as well as the fourth item. But the third item that is the overlay in front of the family service center should not be part of the, of these construction projects, that has to come from an entirely separate budget. And you're right. So, I mean, the others all fall in line with...
Right, I agree with that.
Yep.
And that was what your plan was, correct?
Yep.
Because it was delayed?
Yeah, Brian...
Let's do it at the same time, but continue the round stream that it was. Just do it at the same time, but continue the round stream that it was?
We'll put it at a better price since we're lumping it with all this other work.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I can too, I, I have a question going back to, um, the first item, which we already did approve. And I, I know, Eric, you were, you were mentioning, um, that part of that engineering, uh, and design work that was on Eighth Avenue, there was a lot of surprises that were, um, found there. Uh, but there was also, that also required a lot of change in quantities. Uh, we haven't, we haven't dealt with that, uh, component yet, have we? That, that's, this, that's still separate.
Yep.
So... Because it, because obviously, you know, I, I had the contractor talk to me and I've talked, you know, and I talked to Dave and, and Brian's, you know, we've been communicating back and forth, and I think there still has got to, there's still got to be some negotiating on, um...
Correct.
On those items, but that's not part of this at all.
Yep.
Today we...
Yep, exactly.
Okay. But, yeah, you're right, there was a lot of changes, and there were some good things too. Uh, the contractor elected to divorce some, um, utilities, which actually was a cost savings to the project. So there were some positive changes too. Um, but, yeah, just like Dave said, when you open a hole, you never know what you're gonna find sometimes and...
How, how much changes can happen before you say that, "Well, we shouldn't bid it that way" or whatever, rebid it or... Can we just eat, keep adding all the changes?
I think this project is, is fairly normal, you know, not knowing that that other road was under there, that added for some additional gravel to replace that void there. Uh, it was done real late in the fall, so, uh, some, and it rained, we got all that rain too. So what we did is we did a little extra excavation along the lines of what Commissioner Campbell was saying for the overruns. So the main overruns that we're gonna have is some additional class-five gravel. Uh, we're gonna have some additional, uh, removal costs, and then there was some additional asphalt, uh, that was put on there. That, that'll be probably our main negotiation between the contractor and the, uh, engineering firm that was out there inspecting it. So, um, I, actually, like Eric said, there was quite a few underruns as well that for the most part negated quite a few of the overruns, so we're not too far off really as far as on the pluses and minuses. I, I don't, I don't think this job had...
But I think, going off of what Frank's asking is, at what point does it need to come to us? And I, right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see.
And I understand that when there's an enormous hole in the road, but at the same point, I think that, like you said, the job got done so much faster than I think we hoped it to.
Yeah, and I realize that this situation worked out very good. I mean, but let's say we do another road project, at what point? Do we, do we decide that, you know, and we have twenty, thirty percent change from the original bid? Do, at what point do we say, "Whoa, is, we gotta..."
I think we talked about that a little highway tracking and...
And I, and I think typically, Mr. Chairman, when we, when we do a significant road project, um, you know, we, we would end up with some borings, uh, on, on, you know, like when we, when we do some highway reconstruction. There's borings that go out there. They do that to determine, for one thing, the stability of the road and if it can, if it can handle a mill and overlay versus a complete reconstruction. And I think that's, in this particular case, because of the timing and everything. I don't, I don't recall there's ever any, any borings done, because if we would have had the borings done, we would have found that, that additional road under there, but, but we didn't do it because, you know... I, I don't know, you can't really point fingers at anybody, it's just because we wanted it done and we wanted it done in a hurry.
Right.
You know, so it is what it is, but...
And I think our rule of thumb is if we have a change, increase of amount of ten percent or more is what I usually try to bring to the board and get approval for before we move forward. And that was something that we talked at Highway Committee about a year ago or so. At, at what point do we bring change orders in, uh, before the final approval, so that you guys aren't caught off guard? And it seemed like it was ten percent.
And, Mr. Chair, I know you're talking roads and, and you rely heavily on your engineers to make some judgments out there, but, uh, that's why we had, we engaged a little of our conversation, uh, after you approved the budget as to how do we approve change orders and what authority you're going to, the board is going to give to the chair or the vice chair or whomever you give it to, so that you can keep a handle on it. And on this one, it wasn't a question, like Commissioner Campbell said, doing borings. That road had to go in order to, so it wasn't an overlay issue, it was you had to go down and get the infrastructure cleaned out. So it didn't really matter too much what was above it. So, but, yeah, you're right, this, I think the final figures are gonna be not positive, there will be some additional dollars, but for an eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar project, it's gonna be very minimal.
Yep.
Well, the road had to go, Brian, but we probably would have gotten a more accurate, uh...
Design.
Design and quantities issue had we known...
Had we done the soil borings.
Had we had the soil borings, that's all.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It still doesn't change it.
Still had to go.
Yeah.
I got my question. Still is, if you bid something for a thousand dollars, the next bid is a hundred and ten... I mean, a hundred thousand, the next bid is a hundred and ten thousand, so we take the hundred, hundred thousand. But with change orders, it goes up to a hundred and fifteen thousand. Do we ever, does anything ever happen that the change orders...
I guess we would assume that same change should apply to either contractor, whoever gets it, I think, would be the...
They're all bidding the same thing, pretty much, huh?
Correct.
And the change orders are you're going outside of what they bid. They're doing more or whatever.
Change of quantities or that sort of thing.
Okay, I'll get back to the subject here. Sorry about that.
Well, one positive analogy, Mr. Chair, was, uh, last meeting or the meeting before when you brought in the Highway Six project, that was underbid by twenty or thirty thousand. Not underbid, but it was, um, the costs were less...
Yeah, it was under the original contract.
Because they used less fill or less asphalt or less something. So it worked in a, in a positive way as well. Usually they go the other way, but...
Yeah, on occasion you open a hole and it's better than you expected.
Yeah, that's right.
But, yeah.
Sorry for interruption. Okay, where are you, where are we at here now?
I do want to just make a comment if I may, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the, uh, design that you've done in front of the courthouse. I think that's a really well-utilized space and, and, um, I think we'll add some, some valuable parking. So I appreciate the extra effort that was made on that part.
So the remaining items to approve for contract amendment number two would be the other, I guess there's about six little areas. There are five different areas of, of, like I said, most of it's design. Uh, Eric and I in our department are gonna take care of actually handling the bidding as well as handling the construction engineering. Is that correct?
Yep, the way it's set up now, yeah, this is only design and the highway department will take on all the construction for this next phase.
So do we include the whole motion or do we have to separate out the one item with the family service center?
Mr. Chair, you've already acted on the, the one item. Oh, you mean as far as the family service center? No, in fact, Joe and George are here today. I asked them to sit in because they do plan to pay for that parking lot and the engineering service to design that, but it's one contract with Hughes and Houston. We can handle that internally.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would move that we, um, move forward with the recommended, um, amendments or additions, uh, uh, with Houston Engineering and that, um, all of them, with the exception of the, uh, mill and overlay parking at the family service center, will come out of the, uh, construction funds. And the family center would come out of the, I'm assuming, a building and maintenance fund.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Second.
Joe and George, did you bring a check along then or for this? Okay, okay, yeah, very good.
It's in the mail.
Any further questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, we got item number one underway.
There was an addition at the last second, um, as well. It's separate from the Houston contract, but it's kind of related to the whole campus project. Um, it's a proposal from Braun. And basically, not part of this parking lot project, but when they build the LEC, um, it's gonna kick in the requirements for a stormwater pond. And we're proposing to tuck that pond away over, um, near the city levee, kind of across Ninth Street.
Yeah, I didn't suppose that last week.
Yep, and, uh, to move forward with that, uh, we'd like to get Braun to do a geotechnical evaluation just to make sure we don't have any stability issues with the levee and the pond.
It's right by that flood wall there, and the city wants us to take a look at to make sure we're not impacting their flood wall. So Eric got a proposal from Braun, uh, kind of at the request of, you know, amongst discussions with the city of Morhead. Um, their, their estimate would be about fifty-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And then that would satisfy the geotechnical requirements to make sure that the construction and development of this pond area so close to the flood wall is, it's safe and won't have further impacts. I know it's kind of an addition. I think Eric got it late.
Yeah, late last night, we just got it, so...
If we could get approval on that little agenda addition, it's a, it's a contract with Braun InterTech to do the geotechnical report for the storm pond on the west side of Ninth Street. For Ninth Avenue.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Is this something that we need to put out for bid?
Uh, I think it fits within our normal procurement. I think we, uh, it fits within the rules of our procurement policy. Is that correct, Jenny?
Correct.
So this, um, this pond is just a portion of, of the mitigation that we have to do for the overall project, correct, Brian? Because we have, we still have that piece of where we're gonna be working with the city on.
Yes.
We're mitigating with some ponds on South Morhead.
Okay. It seemed like there was two parts to that too, is that right, Eric? There's volume and there's water, water clarity. And I think between the two ponds, we will satisfy both MPCA requirements for that.
I know what our, I know at our last construction meeting, uh, that we had last Monday, the topic of the smaller ponds north of the LEC was, I brought that up again, if that would still be needed and there, there may or may not be the need to have that. But that, that, those ponds wouldn't require any...
Correct.
Geotechnical.
Correct.
It would not, okay.
The only make is serious is the proximity that that would be.
Right, okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is something that, uh, we, we would need to do and, um, I, I would move that, uh, we authorize those...
Second. Okay, motion approved this, uh, chief technical evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two is our, uh, the work that we did out on the Convent Road or the Sixtieth Avenue South, County Road Twelve Bridge. Uh, we took some quotes and, uh, I think it was the middle of August or so I brought to the board for approval, um, for some deck repair and expansion joint repair on the west side of the Convent Road Bridge. Uh, the original quote was for seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars. It, it included a small amount of estimated work of deck repair. Uh, you know, there's a, got awful lot of traffic out there and without actually getting out there and, and dragging the chain around and listening to hollow areas, um, we, we did grossly underestimate the amount of work. We just had no idea. Lee put twenty, uh, square foot of estimated, which isn't very big, smaller than this table, uh, of work. Well, as we got out there and he's, and the road was closed and now he's out there doing a really good detailed look out there, we ended up repairing four hundred and thirty-eight and a half square feet. Uh, I was in correspondence with the city of Fargo, as they're paying the other half of this bill. Um, and the price, and on top of that, the price of fifty-five dollars a square foot was actually a, a reasonable price, but, uh, we just kept finding more and more areas of delaminated deck that needed to be, um, we cut out and replaced. So that's what we did. Uh, I talked to Lori a little bit and she asked that I bring this to the board for approval of the final number, uh, which is ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the county, Clay County is responsible for fifty percent of that, and it was anticipated to come out of our, our maintenance funds, which we do have enough maintenance funds. Unfortunately, it's, um, another thirteen thousand dollars or so of maintenance funds, but...
I guess that's what prompted my first question that I had, uh, you know, how much can we change a bit, you know? Or wasn't this bid out or we just contracted with someone that did this?
We took, we took several quotes on this. We ended up getting two, I think, one from, one from PCI and we got another one from another contractor. And so we, we did all our work getting our quotes. Uh, the hard thing was, you know, we don't normally shut our roads down to do, uh, some of the work like this. So once the road was shut down, uh, you know, and to be honest, Lee did as much as he could out there with the amount of the road that was closed. He thinks he got probably seventy, eighty percent of the area done. There's probably a few more areas that may still be out there, uh, but for the most part, we did a very good job replacing a lot of the deck. It'll extend the life of the bridge. Um, I probably, as, as he was finding these areas, I probably did miss that. I probably should have came in and, and done a report to the board to let you know that we were gonna overrun. I think that's kind of the piece that I might have missed on this one here. Um, because, you know, he kept telling me he was finding more areas and more areas. And when I was communicating with the city of Fargo, I should have came in and gave you guys a little update as well.
Yes?
If, did I hear you right? You said we got about eighty percent of the deck that needed...
Yep, we didn't have the entire bridge shut down when we did this work, because we, what we did is we had to replace the little rubber gland on the far west side, on the North Dakota side. So when we had one lane shut down at a time, you know, the, the bridge is quite long and I think he got, he got all the real bad areas, yeah.
But my question is, is there twenty percent that's still being to be replaced?
Uh, we're probably, um, we're, this bridge isn't gonna last forever and he told me we're probably gonna be needing to look at a full deck replacement sometime and out between five and ten years.
So the twenty percent should last five years?
Exactly, that's what he told me.
I'm gonna be approving the final advice on the bridge and... Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Number three, approval of sponsoring resolution, maintenance resolution for the tap grants, and we take all three of those order?
I've got, yeah, item three, four, and five are all identical. Um, I believe that the West Central Initiative put a, a memo out to the small counties in Clay County, letting them know that there are small cities in Clay County, let them know that there wasn't a lot of interest in that. I think it's twenty-twenty-one, the tap grant for the year twenty-twenty-one. So all of a sudden, all these applications came through. So we got one for the city of Dilworth, one for Holly and one for Barnesville, uh, asking us to sponsor their projects. So I've got a sponsoring resolution for all three as well as the, uh, agreed to maintain facility resolution. And then I believe there's also a, uh, their cover page of their application needs a signature as well, so...
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the tap grant requires individual resolutions, so...
Yeah.
By, by, by community, so I would, I would move the, um, Dilworth, um, tap grant.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also move the city of Holly tap grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead, Jenny.
I'll make a motion to approve the Barnesville tap grant.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Could you see if Tim is available across there? Eric can go out there and talk to him.
Darren's here, we can do Darren.
I guess we go Darvin, excuse me, Darren.
Darren. I'm gonna switch those two. That's his other brother.
That's his other brother.
Oh, there's Darren.
Oh, Tim's here, I'm sorry, Darren. I like to go Brian, I said, "Was Dave up here?" I didn't expect him here. I think it was on time, so... Okay, we got the flood insurance study for Buffalo River.
Can you just, sorry, before you go, can you just refresh, uh, the board's memory? When we discussed this last time, was there action taken on either comprehensive plan or this study? Do you remember?
The action that I recall being taken was that the comprehensive plan was not funded. I do not recall any action being taken on funding this at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Um, my recommendation was if we weren't gonna do that, we should do this, but there wasn't an action taken at the time.
Thank you.
Um, well, we've talked about this a couple of times before. We've got an area out along State Highway Nine and around Highway Ten, uh, where the, the flood mapping that was done in, I guess it was two thousand and eight, that ultimately became our, our, uh, new flood insurance rate map. In two thousand and twelve, uh, there's some question as to its validity. Uh, there's some elevations out there that are really, really crazy. They have flood elevations that are substantially higher than the elevation of Highway Ten to the tune of almost fourteen. Uh, and it creates problems for anybody who wants to do anything on their property around there. It requires them to elevate their, their structures so high. Uh, well, the prime example in, in that area is probably the Spring Prairie Towne Chapel. Would have had to elevate six feet. They opted to move across the road and not have to elevate at all. But, uh, we're running into situations like that. And, uh, the only way that we can try and mitigate that is to, uh, to have someone do a restudy of the area. The restudy that's proposed by Houston would start at County Road Nineteen, just north of Glendon, and it would... and it would study the Buffalo all the way back to the Tressle, east of State Highway Nine, where it runs under the BNSF railroad there. It probably won't take a lot of property out of the floodplain. But what we're looking for, if nothing else, is to get flood elevations down to a reasonable elevation. Like I said, it's, it, the engineers and even the DNR say that the numbers can't be correct. But in order to prove that they aren't correct, we have to do some work to, to do that.
So all these people here have to pay flood insurance?
If they've got a federally insured mortgage, yeah.
Okay, I guess my question is, I know I helped some families or worked with you on some families out in Holly and they wanted to get their flood insurance taken off. They had a re-evaluation done and they dropped their flood insurance then because of it.
Right.
So it really, they had to pay for their study. So why aren't we saying, okay, if you people want your, your re-evaluation done here, could we assess the properties here instead of, I mean, I realize Clay County doesn't benefit by being able to develop this land, but why wouldn't we assess these people for the re-evaluation?
Ah, I guess I don't know whether the county can do that or not. It's, the situation out here is not that a lot of people were put in the floodplain with our last map. There were some. Most everybody west of State Highway Nine was already in a floodplain. It's just a matter of the elevation has been.
Well, I realized Mr. Nathan was in there last week and we said we'd look into it. I'm just wondering if there's some shared funds that we could be looking at.
Well, I. Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, I think the first thing we got to do is, 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 you know, ask the question of, is, is the, are the FEMA's elevation numbers correct? Right? I mean, that's.
Excuse me, Bruce, did you want to come up here and help us on this?
And, you know, and I.
And Jay, I don't want to, if you want to.
In terms of, you know, even if, like I said, if you don't, if you can't get out of the floodplain, you know, there are, there are things you can do through a LOMAR process that can take an individual property out. I, I think back, I think, didn't we do that, didn't the water should help out in that Anderson addition where, where they did a levy around there? Was it, was that actually a certified levy though to?
It was not.
That one, but, but you can do those things.
You can. I just actually got one on my desk today for Larry Tufton, north of Cragness. He probably invested somewhere in the neighborhood of close to twenty thousand dollars for a LOMAR for a new residential site. Well, I know his family in Holly that I helped out and I helped out. I mean, worked with you on that.
There are some that we've been working on lately that we haven't had, nobody's had to expend any money because we've been able to use a new method of.
Okay, can any of these people do that?
I would doubt that. And, and again, the, for most people here, it's not an issue of whether they're in or out. It's a matter of degree of the elevations.
Well, if, if one of them does the re-elevation, wouldn't that say I'm out of the floodplain? I mean, I'll take Mr. Nathan as an example. If he evaluated his property and said, I'm not in the floodplain, wouldn't that suffice for him? Probably I'm not going to the right way here, I hope, but it's just.
Well, if, if he wanted to try and do a letter of map provision, he could probably do that. That would, well, there are a whole lot of issues with Mr. Nathan. To do a letter of map provision means you've got to fill your property above, beyond the FEMA elevation.
Well, he says he is beyond the FEMA evaluation, isn't he?
Not as it stands right now.
But he has to prove that, okay, very good, absolutely.
From a watershed perspective, I mean, it's always interesting working with FEMA. You know, I can cite two quick examples. One, a Mr. Wombach in Georgetown who built his house to what we thought was the standards. He's inside the levy area. And we find out that Georgetown is the only area in Clay County that cannot have a basement.
Yeah, that's, that's just come up in the last year.
So he, he's got a floodproof basement, built to all the specs. And because Georgetown is the floodplain administrator for their community, they were not included in the exemptions for a basement. So he's the only one in Clay County that can't get out because of that issue. They're working on it. Seal Strauss and others are trying to check into it. The second example is three houses on the curve south of Barnesville on Highway Nine. Two of the three got out with a LOMAR or LOMAR. The third one, which is the highest, Mr. Hang, did not get out because FEMA was using a different cross-section to make their evaluation. So he's subject to a whole different set of elevations. The highest of the three houses did not get out of the floodplain.
That's, that's part of the issue is that some of the cross-sections that were used, especially in the very south end of this, around the Speedway and, and everything else, are questionable. Because they, the two thousand and eight flood study ended at Highway Ten, which is north of Mr. Nathan's property. But they used old data, cross-section data, as best I can tell, to make the floodplain go all the way to the railroad Tressle. And there's a major difference in, in the cross-section elevations that they utilized.
Yes.
Are you talking to this board expending seventy-five thousand dollars to bring peace of mind to a lot of people in our county?
It would affect quite a few people, yes.
People, it would affect quite a few people. In the long run, would it be advantageous to spending that seventy-five thousand dollars so far as getting it back down the line in taxes and things?
Well, I think so. Mr. Nathan commented that the owner of, well, Outlet Recreation, who owns the corner property out there at Highway Nine and Ten, would like to place multiple buildings out there. But given the elevation that they're going to have to raise them to, it's cost prohibitive for them.
Okay, if we did expend this amount of money in Houston Engineering, I believe, is that?
Right.
Would that make it, and they came back in our favor, would that make a difference with FEMA? As far as what they're going to say regarding the floodplain?
Right, what, what would happen is the re-study would need to be done. And we'll assume that it comes back in our favor, the elevations are reduced.
All right.
All of that information goes to FEMA and FEMA approves it, I guess is the term. I mean, they.
What are the chances of their approving it if it comes back in our favor? Do they usually do that?
Yeah, I, I think that if we provide them the evidence that the elevations are not as high as they, they had calculated in their study.
And this would make a difference to a lot of property owners in Clay County?
Well, everybody from Highway Ten to north of Glendon.
How much, what kind of area are we talking about?
Well, if you look at the map, it's on the back page of your.
Yeah, I know that.
Ten square miles.
About ten square miles.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to expend that money for Houston Engineering.
Yes.
Is, is that figure still good for?
I talked to Greg Thielman just before I came in and he said, well, that's using sixteen dollars. He said it's probably up three percent. He can run us another. You said it would be between seventy-five and eighty.
And how about the Buffalo Red? Are they willing to?
Mr. Chair, you have a motion.
We have a second option.
No, not yet.
You probably should have a second.
Well, if we have a second, let's continue the discussion. If we don't have it, just second, let's stop it.
I'll second the motion.
My question was, is the Buffalo Red willing to share the cost on that or? Commissioner, I just need to take a look at our books. We have partnered with Clay County in the past on these efforts through the cooperating CTP grant we had way back. I mean, we've been a partner. There is some funding left in those accounts. I think that could be utilized. I don't know the amount, but I can check into that and I can shoot Mr. Magnuson an email when I return to Barnesville. I think there are some funds in that account for that. So if they did share, we'd still have about forty thousand dollars. Where would that forty thousand come from, Tim, for our share of that?
Well, we didn't expend the money on the comp plan, so I, I guess, I don't know where those funds were, those were intended to come from.
We didn't budget.
Yes. Then I guess I, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. You know, say they shared some, I don't know whatever amount it is. What about the rest of the amount, the assessed to the benefit property? We can't do that, huh?
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, they're the ones that are going to benefit from it. Well.
I guess it's my, my thought is that if, if an entity is operating under the understanding that there is some neglected figures, if there are non-correct figures, for whatever reason it may be, I think I commented on the last one, it would be, I think, in a county government's best interest to make sure that if people are getting assessed or taxed or needing to buy additional flood insurance, that the county has accurate numbers. And because it seems to be something that is not going to be an annual need, I think when we were talking the, the comprehensive plan, I requested that it possibly come from reserves. So I guess we could entertain that, that thought.
But the county is not the one who made this evaluation in the beginning, I mean.
But the county didn't act on it when we knew it was a problem. I mean, we can't go back however many years.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that we didn't act on it because we have, we had to approve the FEMA flood, floodplain mapping, so. I guess this didn't surface until we started having people who were looking at doing some developments.
See, you do do diligence by noticing a hearing and we're going to adapt new maps and who comes. Had these people came and said, this isn't right, it would have been caught before the maps were adopted. Now the maps are adopted, I have a tendency to believe, I mean, right is right and wrong is wrong. If this is wrong, it should be fixed because it will continue to haunt us well into the future until next time there's.
Next time there's maps and.
I'm leaving it fixing. I'm just wondering about the pay.
So the end result here, in, in going through the study, there's an awful lot of blue here, which indicates the hundred-year floodplain and then there's, what is the pink or the red, which is the five-hundred-year floodplain? The, for construction purposes, the regulations are, don't apply to five-hundred-year, right? So, so if this study were to take significant more of the blue and, and turn it to pink, that would be, that would be positive. Excuse me, provided that, I mean, the, the key there is the accuracy of the study, I guess. You know, to make sure that we, because the last thing we want to do is start seeing more building in areas that shouldn't be built. And, and going to your question Frank, in terms of special assessing, I, I, I've never known in, in my time on here and in all my time following the county that, that we special assess for, for projects.
Well, I realize that, you know, I'm just saying some other people had to pay for it.
A watershed can special assess and does special assess based on improvements.
Well, I appreciate the watershed stepping forward and looking at it, you know, possibly assisting in this. So we don't know if there will be any assistance there or not.
There obviously is a process. I, I think, Commissioner, you are correct that we could set up a project area. Part of the problem is maybe that the time you dot all the i's and cross all the t's and go through all the steps and you're raising thirty or forty thousand dollars, the process in and of itself will cost maybe, I don't know, it'll be almost that much, but it costs money to do the process, so. And I, I just wasn't prepared for this. I'd have just brought my books along and could have said, here's what we might have available. So if it's something you don't feel comfortable adopting today, you know, you meet weekly, I'll get you that information as soon as I return to Barnesville. And, and all I can do is report the information. It's these gentlemen and the ladies on our board that will actually make the decision as to whether or not those funds can be used for this purpose at their meeting on January.
I, I agree a hundred percent with what Commissioner Mojo said about, you know, if we've got, if we got inaccurate data on areas of our land based on, on something that we think is, is false information, it's our responsibility to correct it, whether it's here or anyplace else. And, let me finish. The simple matter is, it's got to be done. And I would like to just amend Commissioner Mojo's. Was it Wayne's motion? Okay, and, and the second, Wayne's motion then, that these funds come out of reserves and that, that we look to the Buffalo Red for any shared revenue that we can, we can get to do the project.
I'll go along with that so long as we're passing a motion to expend the money out of our reserves and whatever they could come up with, that would also be fine. That's fine, Kevin, thanks.
Okay, we'll vote on that, unless there's further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
I will get some with Greg Thielman, but if any change, there would be a cost there.
I appreciate you moving that discussion, Chris, thank you.
Yes. Okay, we'll try again there.
Sometimes they.
Bruce, would you need a county representative at that discussion? Would you like a county representative at the discussion?
Yeah, we can on January nine. I'll get you those numbers and make sure.
Thank you.
Jenny, if you get that, I mean, O two may be.
Yeah, it's, yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully mine won't be so contentious, but you never know. This is my annual end of year information that would be proposed to you to pass for the two thousand and seventeen year. The first one that I have on the agenda is the grid adjustment for two thousand and seventeen, which was the proposed three point two percent increase on all of the grids, the accounting grid and the RBRW grid. And I believe we're going to do these individually, if that's okay.
All right, so we'll take the first one for three point two five percent grid adjustment. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second thing is the meal reimbursement rates. This did go, and we did have some discussion at the PIC committee, I think it was last week or maybe last month. And it is being proposed that we go from, to a ten dollar for breakfast, fifteen dollar for lunch, and twenty dollar for dinner increase. I believe the last time that this was increased was back in two thousand and twelve. So this would be, I believe, an eight dollar increase for, for a day of meals.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The per diem rates were the same. No increase is proposed for that. That is currently at a hundred dollars per day.
Move.
Yeah, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
The fourth thing is the IRS mileage rate increase. I looked online the end of last week and they don't have the two thousand and seventeen rate yet. But normally we adopt whatever the IRS mileage rate is. This year it's fifty-four cents, but it usually doesn't fluctuate more than two or three cents either way. So it shouldn't be either a great decrease, increase or a decrease.
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, second the gross rate. When it comes out, we'll adjust it to that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last thing on my list here is the proposed two thousand and seventeen furlough program. Last year, I, I did some calculations. In the middle of last month, this program saved twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars in wages at this point for the two thousand and sixteen furlough program. And that's about average of what we've had before, usually about, anywhere from about twenty-four thousand to twenty-six thousand. Usually about, anywhere from about $24,000 to $26,000 a year we save through the furlough program in wages. So the proposal would be to continue that for 2017.
So I'll move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
I, I just had a question for you, if, I mean, so the conversation that we had in regards to exempt employees.
Yes.
And then there, was there an action by a Texas judge?
Yes.
Okay. So, so how does that change going forward? Everything was just, is just held at, at what the previous agreement was until there's a decision on that?
Well, it, it kind of threw everything into a tizzy, as you can imagine. And what they basically said is if you've already gone so far down the road that you have the ability to continue that, and so with many of our employees, we did continue that because we had already figured out, and looking at their job descriptions, probably most of them or a lot of them should have been non-exempt anyway, which they were exempt. So we, that was an adjustment that we made and thought was correct. Where we are right now is that the social workers, which were always on the verge of that, should they be exempt or non-exempt, they, their union would, wanted to put that, us, put that on hold so that we could see what the judge is going to eventually pass or the law, or maybe it's repealed, who knows what it, what will happen to it. And so I have some meetings scheduled in the first part of January with the Social Workers Union Group to explain that, why we think as a county believe that going to a non-exempt status would work out better for everybody, not only the employees but us, but there has been some pushback within the Social Workers Union to say, well, you know, we want to stay as exempt. And so with that group, we decided to put that on hold until we can meet with them, find out what their concerns are, and then see where this law is going to go, and then make some decisions after that. Like I said, when I previously came in the board, was that the, in Minnesota, about 60% of the social workers are non-exempt and the other 40% are exempt. So even within Minnesota, nobody's really determined whether they should be exempt or non-exempt based on this discussion. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Mr. Chair, and, and just for clarification on it, the board did approve those changes, and what we're, we're asking you for is indulgence to allow some communication with the employees and then to either confirm or reverse the decision in, in a month or so. So that's kind of where it's at. So you did pass that.
Right. And that was, I, I knew that, I just didn't know what our steps going forward were in the meantime.
Right. So like I said, we, we do, we have had something.
Already won't go on a non-exempt.
Okay.
Kevin.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I got a question. The only thing we got left, I mean, I realize we have to go to a closed session here, but the only thing we got left is Brian's report. Can we do that, then adjourn, and then hold it?
We have to adjourn in open session, so we'd have to reopen to adjourn.
So we can do the report first and then close session?
Yeah. But then we would have to reopen to adjourn. So, and I, if you would rather do it either way, it doesn't, it doesn't save us the reopening of the meeting.
Well, why don't we just go with your report and get that?
Okay. I'll make it real quick.
That'd be, no, take your time. Your report's always right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. A few items here. One last, Wednesday, Steve and I did travel to Fergus to look at a facility that, for juvenile possibilities, and that was discussed in, kind of in depth on Monday morning with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Whalen. So that was just looking at possibilities, nothing moving forward at all there. We had a central administration managers' meeting last Thursday, I believe it was, discuss issues that are going on within central administration and different things. Did attend the diversion board meeting that's already been reported on. Commissioner Campbell mentioned the approval of the P3. That is a huge agreement that is now moving forward. The, there's four, it's been narrowed to four firms. You've heard a little bit about it in the news of a up to a million dollar compensation. But what is going to happen with these four firms, they're going to put proposals together that are going to present a guaranteed, basically a guaranteed maximum price to build this facility. They're going to put in months of work in regards to designing bridges, designing the, the banks, the, the compaction, and all those kinds of things. And the diversion authority has approved up to a 50% reimbursement, not to exceed a million dollars for their efforts in that. Now, that is stepping outside of how you normally bid projects, but this is such a huge, huge project, and they're going to have to invest a lot of money just to present a reasonable proposal. And I think you, you folks as part of the diversion authority want a, the best proposal as you can get. And frankly, by doing it this way, and, and I was on the committee that, that interviewed these four firms or these six firms, and then we narrowed it to four. But you have to look at it, I think, in terms of the fact that one bid might come in $950 million from one firm. The next firm that has put together a very solid package might come in at $910 million. You may save $40,000 by investing a very small amount of money in the terms of, of this, of this production. So that's kind of the logic, and like I said, if you get some pushback or some questions in regards from the public on that. But that is moving forward, and I think a final decision by about July, I think the, the target date is, to select the group that will then design and build the channel. So it's, it's quite extensive. We had a diversion advisory meeting Friday morning, talked about a lot of these issues going forward, the funding issues, the legislation, the, the new administration, how that is going to be impacted, lots of different issues on that. And then after that meeting, we had a, there was four of us, Mike Redlinger and, and John Shockley and Darrell Vanio and myself got together. We've been asked by the, the diversion authority to look at a job description for the executive director's position. So we've started putting together some guidelines for the selection of that executive director, should the board decide to, to appoint an executive director for that. And then already mentioned the juvenile space needs that we met on Monday morning. And then yesterday afternoon, I did attend that legislative meeting with the, with Social Services, and Rhonda had put together an excellent agenda and just really did just an outstanding job of putting some statistics together. Several attended that from Social Services, and it really kind of centered around, and, Commissioner Gross talked about that, but it's really an important item of, of how the, the cost shift has changed from the state for civil commitments, not the criminal committed ones, but the civil commitments that are down there for help. And it, it's really a concern, and, and I thought it was a real good discussion on that. And then you, Mr. Gross, you and I met yesterday morning to go over several of these items. So that's the meetings I attended. Thank you.
Okay. Move to go to a closed session? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in closed session. Let me get this turned out here. Okay.
Mr. Chair, move to a turn.
The closed session, we got.
Oh, yeah, we got a.
Make a motion to reopen.
Yeah. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to reopen our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Word adjourned.